I took this out so you could turn my volume up.
Didn't do it.
Did you turn your sound to private?
I think so. Well, I don't think we're gonna hear Tarzan.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held April seventeen, twenty eighteen, at six P. M. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Alt House.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Howery.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Here.
And Mayor Alinsky.
Here, thank you. And please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noted for legal action. Any council members have anything to report tonight?
Yes.
Please.
I was quite busy the last couple of weeks. Probably the top items are attended the Northern Arizona Council of Government Area Agency on Aging meeting and Flagstaff, very educational. They had really good things about, to say about our senior center and the number of people that we serve as compared to the other communities. So, that's something I'm gonna meet with the senior center administrator on and talk to her a little bit about, see how we can garner some more funds for her direction. Bing's Burger grand opening, top on my list, I had to go. Great job, great food. If you really like onion rings, go, they've got great onion rings. Attended a professional women's group today, is their quarterly meeting, their luncheon. They had a great motivational speaker named Rosalyn Williams. She did a great job, if you're interested. You don't need to be a professional to attend the meetings, the luncheons, they're great. And I just wanted to give a plug in for both Verde Valley Leadership and the Professional Women's Group, both have scholarships going right now. If you get online and you apply, very easy to apply, money to give away to individuals that wanna go to college or pick up their education again. Verde Valley Leadership is at VVLeadership.org, and the Professional Women's Group is at PWGAZ.org.
Great, thank you.
I just had two items I'd like to report on. I attended the public meeting of the Verde Valley Regional Economic Organization recently. This meeting was, was to unveil, I guess, the final draft of the Regional Economic Development Plan. Our city manager and our economic development director were also in attendance. The plan focuses on our economic development as a region, working in collaboration with all of our Verde Valley and other entities here, or municipalities and towns. As you know, our city has our own economic development plan, but here with the focus on collaboration, we can hopefully work together to further all of our own individual economic development goals, you know, making, making it all work as a, as a region. Right now is a really important point in the plan's development, though, it's the public comment portion of the plan. There were some really good comments at the meeting, some thoughts, some criticisms that I thought were well heard by the working group. But VV Rio invites the public, if you'd like, to review the plan and also, you know, submit a comment to go to their website at VVRio.com, and you can email your public comments to the working group there. The second item was the Mingus Invitational Meet. Mayor Alinsky and I braved the winds on Friday and spent the afternoon out there, and I was inspired by our high school athletes. They were working hard and, and really competing despite the wind. The wind, you know, what the kids that I spoke with, interacted with, weren't even bothered or fazed by it. It did raise some challenges, but they, they overcame despite of that, and it was really a neat, neat experience. Also, it was Senior Athlete Recognition Day, which was meaningful with their parents. So, overall, a really neat and good experience.
Great, thank you. Any other council members? Okay. We'll move on then to presentation tonight. Yes, oh, I'm so sorry.
I have a couple items. And just if you wanna hearken back to those days of your high school athletic career, this Saturday is the Tenth Annual Brian Mickelson Run Walk. So, get out your running shoes, you can run a marathon, half marathon, ten K, and a two K, I believe, or a two miler. Anyway, that'll start at six A. M. There will be a little bit of traffic restrictions in the Old Town area, and you're still able to register online or at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. Also, our, and this is really, I think, relevant based on recent news, our City Information Technology Department, along with state, federal, and local partners, will present a free half-day workshop on cybersecurity. This will be Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, from nine A. M. to twelve-thirty P. M. at the Public Safety Building, and you can register at EventBright.com. And again, this is open to the public, and we certainly encourage the public to participate. And if anybody has any questions about that, they're certainly welcome to call City Hall, and we'll get them connected. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. So, up next is the presentation of the Cottonwood Police Department's Twenty Seventeen Annual Report. Chief Gazelle, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Alinsky. Happy Tax Day to all of you today. Again, my name's Steve Gazelle, I'm the Cottonwood Police Chief. I'm joined by Commander Gary Isinga today. Today, I wanna move as quickly as I can, as I see we've got a lot of folks in the audience here to hear the eighty-nine and mine, so I'll move quickly. My intent today is to, A, represent our fabulous men and women from our police department in recapping our Two Thousand Seventeen Annual Report, which was in your packet. For the members of our audience and those that are watching, we just posted it to our website, so you can go to the city's website right now, go to the police department's section, and you will find the annual report that we're gonna be walking you through very quickly today. So, you know, I just said I represent the fabulous men and women of the police department, but it takes far more than our folks to ensure a safe community, and we're very, very fortunate to police a community that is, A, very invested in the welfare of this community and their neighbors, and also very supportive of their public safety departments, both police and fire, and we're very appreciative of that. And I can tell you that it does not, that support, including council support, does not go unnoticed by our staff. So, new format this year, we're very excited. This is the first time that we've assembled the document that you see. It's a conglomeration of several different pieces of information, which I'll just touch on real quickly with several different goals. First, there's a transparency objective. Transparency in policing has never been more important. I will continually say that, you've probably heard me say it before, and you'll probably hear me say it again. I think it's, it's imperative that any community's police department is transparent in their operation, in their philosophies, and their actions, quite frankly. It's a very dynamic business, a very odd business, very high liability business, and very dangerous business in many instances, and I personally think, and I think the citizens would, would appreciate the level of transparency which is reflected in this document. So, in that regard, you'll see a use of force summary, so the number of times we've used force, and I'll go through that as we touch through. You'll also see a recapping of our personnel investigations on our own employees. We police our people like no other business, I can tell you that right now, our bar is set very, very high, and that summary is in here as well. Our organizational and workload outcome, the information is included in there. And at the back of this plan, we're very, very proud to include our first year of our strategic plan. These would all be what we call Year One Initiatives, although there's about eighteen months that's included in there that captured some of the strategies that were launched before the actual plan was published, which we want to make sure we memorialize. And finally, crime trends and statistics, which we always realize that our public, the public is very interested in. So, moving very quickly through the document, I'm gonna hit certain, a couple of programs that are service enhancements that we see that we are very proud of, they're all relatively new. The marquee program that we like to advertise whenever we can is our Neighborhood Officer Program. If you're familiar with that, we've divided the city up into nine different neighborhoods, and each one of those neighborhoods is assigned to one or two of our sworn employees, our officers, or supervisors that work the field, and those are their areas of responsibility. So, if a citizen needed the police response right away, or needed to file a report, this would not be the contact that you generally make. But if you had an ongoing problem, or you wanted to connect with your police department in a, in a way that goes beyond the traditional means of having to pick up the phone and talk to a person that you don't know, and then get to officers, one or two officers that will change every time you call. So, establishing that different conduit to your police department, very important to us, and we've, we've experienced a great deal of positive feedback on that. It's been up and running for the last year, year and a half. The report also touches on our social media exposure. We do have, PD has a very active Facebook page. We have a couple of buttons on the city's relatively new app. We had our own app, and we've since put that in the proverbial closet and jumped on board with the city's new app, so we would encourage people to, to go to our website, and if you have not signed up for that city app, do so, and you'll see a couple of buttons come from the police department. This summer, we'll be offering information on a service called Code Red, which I think on the other hill, on the other side of the hill, Prescott and Prescott Valley just adopted this, one of the two cities, don't quote me, it's one of the two. But it's a mechanism in collaboration with the County Sheriff's Department that provides emergency notification to residents that you, you can sign up to, or for, I should say. Moving beyond that, we're celebrating over a year of a Victims' Rights Advocate, which we currently have the only Victims' Rights Advocate on this side of Mingus Mountain. We're very, very proud of not only the new program, but who we have in that new program, and she just recently won an award at our annual Employee Recognition Dinner, our Victims' Advocate. Our SWAT team, I wanna plug real quickly, is such a valuable resource, being a former SWAT commander, I can tell you that these are highly trained individuals that, that are stand-by-the-ready for that pager to go off and respond to very, very dynamic, dangerous situations, and we support the Verde Valley Regional SWAT Team, which in reality is about ninety percent Cottonwood PD. We do have support, as of late, by several other Verde Valley agencies, Sedona being one that has stepped up and provided a couple operators, and we do have negotiators as well from Clarkdale and other cities, but we do have the only tactical team on this side of the mountain. Our Safe Shopper, Safe Community Program, we're celebrating our, is my timer? They do that to me back at the office, but they're usually joking. Safe Shopper, Safe Community Program, we've experienced some phenomenal successes there as well. That program is available to private land owners and business owners as well, to include our, all of our major shopping areas in the city, all the strip malls are signed up as part of this program that reduces unsafe behavior and perception of unsafe behavior through allowing the police to patrol private property and advise individuals that they cannot loiter or solicit on their property. Very, very successful. And I can tell you, attached to that, a little nuance is, I believe, we've only had one or two actual arrests that have, we could be up to about five right now in the year and a half that we've had that program, which really speaks to the deterrent, in fact, which is what we were shooting for in the begin, beginning to reduce enabling environments and create safe, safe areas for, for people to go about their business around the community, and we think we've reached that goal. You'll also see the annual use of force summary, which I mentioned before. I think the highlight from that is we had fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand incidents with contact between police officers and members of the public. Out of those fifteen thousand, we had nine hundred and fifty-nine arrests. Out of those nine hundred and fifty-nine arrests, only twenty-four required some level of use of force. And again, I'm extremely proud of the men and women that, particularly those that go out and suit up in their, in the uniform every day and risk their own well-being for people they don't know. I get compliments all the time, I've heard some of those compliments from you regarding citizen input on the interaction they have with our staff, and I think that particular stat showing, out of all those arrests, only two-point-five percent of those occasions where we had to arrest somebody, some type of force was necessary, and that could be from what we call an arm bar, or some type of a takedown, where we take somebody to the ground, and I think that's the majority of what we see here in the pie chart, all the way up into, obviously, to the use of deadly force, which we had none for the use of the year of two thousand seventeen, thankfully. Our communication center took twenty-four thousand nine-one-one calls. As you are well aware, it's a regional communication center. Our service population extends far beyond the city of Cottonwood. Our communication dispatchers are very talented, very hard-working individuals that dispatch for the majority of the fire districts in the Verde Valley. Fifteen thousand law enforcement calls, they fielded one thousand four hundred medical, and I've rounded some of these, two hundred rescue calls, twelve hundred fires, seven hundred collisions, two thousand public assist calls. We go to the professional standards piece, which some people, in my world, I refer those as internal affairs investigations, and those are administrative investigations involving some type of a pile, a policy violation committed, or alleged, I should say, by one of our employees, and that could be sworn or non-s sworn. And again, generally, it's a very dynamic business, autonomous decision-makers, decisions that have to be made very quick. We understand there's a margin of error, we like to reduce that, the, you know, the number of errors that are out there, so we set our bar very, very high. You'll find that in most police, police agencies, the bar is set very, very high. We take it very seriously, we take every complaint we receive from, from the public very seriously. Typically, most internal investigations are internally initiated, we're harder on our people, generally speaking, than the public is. Little anomaly, this year, we had half and half, half, seven complaints were internal and seven were initiated external. And the range of discipline that would result from that would be, many times, the complaint is unfounded or not sustained, meaning there is no ramification for the employee. If there is some type of culpability, it could range from verbal counseling to termination. And again, the vast majority of the complaints that we experienced here, that I've experienced in my career with police officers, thankfully, are minor policy violations. And I think we all agree, a healthy culture of accountability at all levels of job classifications is paramount, particularly in policing, but all occupations. Crime trends, stats, so let me just go on record as saying, this is, Cottonwood is a safe city. We intend to keep it that way, with the, with the public's help, which, which I touched on earlier, which we cannot, cannot do it alone. Having said that, and we cannot ensure a safe city through enforcement alone either. There's a number of preventative measures and preventative initiatives that have been very successful with our stakeholder organizations and members of the community that have reduced the crime rate in the city, I believe, and created a more robust and healthy quality of life for all of our residents and visitors. You'll see a note in there that most crimes go unreported, this drives us crazy, this drives us crazy, and it's been that way my entire career. I can't tell you how many times I've talked to people, and they say, "Well, after the fact, something heinous has gone wrong," and they say, "You know, I was gonna call, but I, I just didn't know if it was worth it." Well, I'm here to tell you it's worth it, so please call us if you believe that there's some reason to get us involved, and please call us. No one is going to be upset that you called, and we're, to the opposite, we're gonna be very, very grateful that you did. We'd like to promote a see something, say something culture. We're doing the same thing in our, in our schools locally as well. So, when we get to the graphs that you see, the caveat that I'll throw out there is we have a very small city, so the raw numbers that you see, you won't see many percentages, because percentages can be very, very misleading when you talk about crime rates, particularly if your raw number is, is low. Example, given if you have a homicide, one homicide last year, and then we have two the following year, what's the percentage of the increase?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent increase. So, we, we avoid using percentages in this document because the raw number is, is what it is. Overall, we've seen modest decreases in most crime categories, you'll see reflected in those graphs, with the exception of sexual assaults and fraud. So, I asked our staff the question of why, why the anomaly with sex assaults and frauds, and the answer we get back is, with sex assaults, there's a reporting element there, it's not necessarily there's being, there's more sex assaults per se, but there's more people reporting sex assaults, and you have a national, the movement, the hashtag Me Too movement, the, the influence of our Victims' Rights Advocate is another catalyst that may increase the, the number of, of reports. The fraud, most of those are driven by, if you'll remember, you saw some media reports about a lot of counterfeit bills being passed around town, there's several instances or rashes of these counterfeit bills being passed around town, that's the spike there. And I'll jump ahead to drugs and drug trends. You've all heard about the opioid epidemic by now, the governor has a plan that's out there. Certainly, it's hit other areas of the country worse than here, although it is certainly an issue here, to the point where I personally sit on a, on a opioid overdose death panel for Matforce to analyze how people ended up dying from these overdoses, to see if there's any systematic failure where we could make those adjustments and save lives. But the trend is equally as alarming, is, you know, drugs are, they definitely come and go, whatever the drug du jour is, and seemingly, everything, all the information we're getting is meth is making a comeback. And meth is absolutely a hideous drug in many different ways, has different individual and community impacts, and that counterfeit piece that I mentioned, that is tied to meth. Those are mainly methamphetamine addicts trying to get more of their, their fix. At the back end of the annual report is perhaps what our agency is most proud of, and that is all the strategic initiatives that have been accomplished. And again, from here on out, it will be every year, this one encapsulates a little bit more than a year, about eighteen months of initiatives that are captured there, and you'll get that from us every year, where we'll report out on not only what we said we were gonna do, but what we did. And feel free to ask any questions on what the background is at any point in time, same offer goes to the public of any of those initiatives, or if you have ideas on future initiatives, we'd certainly be interested in that as well. As a key, real quickly, anything that begins with a one, we have a number of overarching strategic directives. The first one is number one, always number one, that's reduce crime. Number two is promote organizational excellence, so the strategic initiative that you see, the number it starts with will fall under that category. Number two is promote organizational excellence, number three is strengthen relationships, number four is enhance traffic safety, number five is enhanced technology solutions, and number six is enhance infrastructure. Over the last eighteen months, our staff, and this is not a management initiative, it's management-driven, but certainly is, all of our employees are involved in the, both the formation and the execution of a very living document, our strategic plan, and we've, we're proud to say that we've completed fifty-three initiatives, which you see there, tallied on your document, from, all the way from including, from something that's relatively benign and low-hanging fruit, like revising our mission statement, something more complex involving collaborative efforts, such as our alternative sentencing program. That being said, thank you very much, council, I would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions for the chief?
I just wanna give you a kudos, I don't think probably most of the people sitting here understand the intense, intensity of a strategic plan, and usually when you initiate a strategic plan, you're lucky to get five or ten items completed in a year, and that's, that's sincere for most communities. So, to do fifty-three is incredible, and I understand some of it's low-hanging fruit, but that's just amazing to get that many initiatives completed in a twelve-month, seventeen-month process, I just wanna give you kudos for that.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
I have one, one question, though, about the Victim Services Advocate, which I think is fantastic that we have it on board now. How do you track the effectiveness of that position?
That's a great question, and it's, it's kind of anecdotal, which, which is quite frankly, a lot of the measures that we have, a lot of our initiatives are very, very difficult to track outcomes truly scientifically. With her, I think our primary focus is the number of contacts that she makes, which have steadily increased, and, and some of that's anecdotal, the feedback from the victims and helping them, you know, marshal them through the process of, of the, you know, the criminal justice process involving their, their aggressor.
Okay. I just, I feel like it's an important position to have here in Cottonwood, I, I don't know how, I mean, it's, it's grant-funded, so hopefully, we can prove that it is being, that position's effective and we'll be able to continue that.
We just gotta, Commander, just remind him where you are. It is totally grant-funded, you are correct, and the grant door closed, quite frankly, so we got, we got in, it was a last chance for romance, and we, we did get that, that grant, and we just got news that we had three-year extension on it as well.
Oh, that's great news.
And that includes a vehicle, so we, we definitely were very fortunate in garnering that, it's pass-through, federal pass-through money through the state.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is call to the public, this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion, however, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that's not officially listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the council, please? And so, just so you're aware, you're, you're limited to five minutes.
Stand.
Okay. Sure, thanks, thank you, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council for allowing the Verde Santa Fe community the opportunity to present their concerns. My name is Robert Goodell, and I have lived in Verde Santa Fe since August of two thousand six. A little history of the Verde Santa Fe community. As I stated in my email to all of you, there are nine hundred and fifty-three home sites spread over seven subdivisions encompassing roughly four hundred and forty-six acres, including the golf course. There are four gated communities, and three of the four are experiencing some major erosion issues, as well as some of the Master Association common wash areas. The Master Association Board would like to bring to the city's attention their concerns regarding these areas, since proposed project for the newly annexed land of Cottonwood will potentially have some impact on the Verde Santa Fe community. I attend, attended the Combined City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at the Cottonwood Rec Center in March of two thousand sixteen, in which the rework of the eighty-nine and mine development was being reintroduced to Cottonwood. I have tried to follow the activity of the project by checking in the permitting department, but didn't have much luck until I saw in the Verde Independent, the work session that you had last week. I listened to the presentation, passed along the information to the Verde Santa Fe Master Association Board, who requested that the committee that has been formed to examine the erosion activity, present the Verde Santa Fe Master Association Board's concerns to the city council. By default, I won the honor. The attachment that I provided in my email was a project that I was involved in with the result of the severe storm the Verde Valley experienced on August twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Verdi Valley experienced on August twelfth, two thousand and seventeen. As you can see from the pictures, there was significant amount of flooding that occurred in Verdi Santa Fe, as well as a result, a number of wash areas are now in the condition that is jeopardizing some home sites in two of the gated communities, La Privada and Dorado. These two communities share a common wash that the Master Association Board, along with the individual subdivision boards, are in the process of soliciting bids to have an engineering study done on this area, to come up with a plan to hopefully stop the continued erosion that is occurring. This erosion is impacting at least four home sites, and there are pictures on pages nine through eleven. There is wrought iron fencing, as well as block walls that are being undermined as a result of the wash designs that were done. What isn't helping the situation is that some of this area is also fill material, since you can see where plastic banding is sticking out of the embankment, as well as small rocks. Our committee met with our county supervisors, Mr. Thurman and Mr. Garrison, and some representatives from the Yavapai County Flood Control District on December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. They were presented with the report, and I have provided to all of you. We had a brief discussion of the concerns, and then walked the most severely damaged wash areas. Their comments were not very reassuring, as they basically stated that we were on our own in this matter. So, so far in our discussion with a few engineering companies, there have been some comments made that the wash designs done originally on Verdi Santa Fe would not conform to current wash designs that Yavapai County has adopted. They also commented that one of the streets that flooded was designed, in their opinion, incorrectly, since the street gutters were not adequate to handle the volume of water, and the street was crowned where it should have had an inverted crown. This would have allowed the street to, allowed the street to self-clean and not flood or take out landscape material. I have also been able to obtain a report that was done by an engineering company in Phoenix, David Evans and Associates, that is titled Phase Three Drainage Report for Verdi Santa Fe Parcels Fifteen, Sixteen, Eighteen, and Nineteen, dated June two thousand and two. That drainage report also states its objective is to demonstrate that the proposed development results in no adverse impacts downstream and provide for future reports as phased, as phases of the project are developed. The report also states that there is also concern with four Cornville Road culvert crossings that are opposite Verdi Santa Fe. The drainage report states, pending hydraulic analysis, the proposed improvements as part of eighty-nine and Vine project are intended to have no adverse effects on these culvert crossings. The post-project conditions discharged are to be less than or equal to the design discharge for the City of Cottonwood Ordinance Number One Seventy-two, or the one-hundred-year water surface elevations do not negatively impact the existing infrastructure or cause overtopping of Cornville Road, where overtopping did not previously occur. The two parcels referenced in the drainage report constitute the eighty-nine and Vine project. If you look at the way these two parcels line up with Verdi Santa Fe, the eastmost boundary is opposite the Verdi Santa Fe wash area that is currently experiencing the most severe erosion. This area also appears to be highlighted on the original presentation on page one fifty-five, existing topography for eighty-nine and Vine. My presence here today is to just express Verdi Santa Fe's concern that this issue will be considered in the overall design going forward. We applaud the city for doing their due diligence on the review of this planned community, and hope that these standards are adhered to. And in the future studies and analysis indicated in the report are performed and implemented during the construction phase. We are hopeful that the concerns of the homeowners downstream are listened to, so that the same type of situations don't occur in this new community, as well as adversely impact the Verdi Santa Fe community. Thank you.
Mr. Goodell, thanks. You can now take a breath.
You know, I practiced at home, and it was a little over five, so I was trying.
I, I understand your concerns very much, and I'm, I'm sure that the developer will be working to make sure that they don't do anything that adversely affects the washes down below. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, move on then to approval of minutes. We have, I'm sorry, is there anyone else in the public tonight that would like to address council? No? Okay. They'll move on to the approval of minutes, regular meeting of March sixth, twenty eighteen, and April three, twenty eighteen.
I move to approve the regular minutes of March sixth, twenty eighteen, and April third, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Move on to the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. If, if you don't mind, I'll just read the items on the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have four items tonight. Item one is award of bid for the purchase of two diesel engine generator sets from Cummins Sales and Service to be used at Verdi Santa Fe and Verdi Village Seven, serving units six, seven, and eight. Item two is one-year renewal of the contract with Red Rock Collision for the, for city vehicle bodywork and painting services. Item three, renewal of the contract with W.W. Williams for cert, city generator maintenance and repair services. Item four, resolution number twenty-nine forty-five, affirming the city's fair housing policy, making known the city's commitment to the principle of fair housing and describing actions the city shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Any items that the council would like to pool? Any items the public would like to pool?
Now. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Rahalhaus made the motion, and Pfeiffer seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The consent agenda is approved. Deputy Clerk, please read resolution number twenty-nine forty-five.
Resolution number twenty-nine forty-five, a resolution of the mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, affirming a fair housing policy, making known its commitment to the principle of fair housing and describing actions it shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to new business. Three items tonight. Item one is discussion, consideration, and possible approval of a proposed infrastructure and assurances agreement with Verdi Santa Fe Limited Partnership and Brookfield Communities, Inc., for the proposed eighty-nine and Vine master planned community development project located at the northeast corner of State Route eighty-nine A and Cornville Road.
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. We discussed this last week, so by way of a quick re-introduction of, of the council and the community to the project, this is a, a section of land, give or take, the intersection of Cornville Road, Dominguez Extension, and eighty-nine A. It is, it has long ago received its entitlements to develop as a, as a master planned community, as the second phase of, of the extension of, of Verdi Santa Fe. Verdi Santa Fe being outside the city limits and this being inside. It is the, the, the plan is for a little over two thousand at build-out residential units, plus commercial development along the eighty-nine frontage, grape vineyards, a wine center, outdoor and indoor recreational amenities. The whole project is the subject of a two-thousand-one development agreement that, that provides for the entitlements I mentioned. And the, the purpose of, of this incremental step that we're discussing tonight is, is an agreement that would provide the, the framework and the parameters for what I'd call the, the backbone infrastructure for the project, to begin with the first phase of residential development. And it addresses drainage, transportation infrastructure, both within and exterior to the project boundaries, water and wastewater. With respect to water and wastewater, there have been a lot of discussions, and, and those were the discussions that I think took the longest to, to resolve and come to a consensus on between staff and the development team. And what we're looking at now is having the, the developer provide onsite water and wastewater service that will be dedicated to the city, and they will become part of the city's utility infrastructure. So, that includes a, a water campus, a redundant water campus, that will start with at least two working wells, pumping, storage, treatment, that will be able to provide for twice the project's anticipated need at the threshold of, of a particular phase. So, we'll have the redundancy there. The, the wastewater will be onsite wastewater treatment collection system that is, that is built to specifications that the city approves, because the city will be operating it. And I know there's been ongoing discussions, and will continue to be discussions, between the developer, the engineer, and our utility department about that. The drainage improvements I discussed and we've heard about, I know, and I was talking with Mr. Stuckey earlier today, it hasn't been a subject of a lot of discussion recently, but I know in an earlier iteration, we, we did have a lot of discussions about the, the fine distinctions between retention and detention, and the city's requirements that any development not create any off-site impacts with respect to stormwater drainage. And as council knows, there's a, there's a large trails and open space component, and the developer has committed, the landowner has committed, to having the, the recre, the outdoor recreational amenities follow the, the city's master plans for trails and recreation, as those are updated as the years go on. Because with a project this large, the developer anticipates it taking, and I think it, it's an ambitious goal, but it being developed out in, in ten years and in multiple phases. So, with that, I think the, the development team would like to also re-present a short presentation to the council and the public. And then, at that point, we could answer any questions about the, the agreement that we're asking you to consider tonight.
Okay. Would council like to have Mr. Stuckey come up then and present?
Please.
Or the, the long, right?
Lynn Legard.
Legard. Man, I got it wrong. Sorry.
Lynn Legard. And this will be a little bit brief. I won't go back to the sheepherders like I did last time. With me tonight are Craig Peterson of, with Brookfield Communities, John Wettsnister, our engineer, and of course, Jay Stuckey, who along with me has been working on this project so long that I went into retirement in the middle of it, and he brought me back. That's how long we've been doing it, the late eighties. Projects like this take a long time, and we're delighted that we are at the point at which we are to get this infrastructure agreement approved and to get started on the project. Again, thanks to Steve, Doug, all of your staff. The infrastructure, water and sewer was tricky, but we've gotten it done, and we think we have a good solution. I'll make this a little brief, but we know we have some neighbors from Verdi Santa Fe South who might like a refresher on what the project is about. And as I said last week, I'm really happy to see the Heart of Arizona Wine Country logo up there, because that is what our project is focused around. And Craig, if you would do the first few, these are conceptual renderings to give you an idea of the fact that we are about wine country. There are going to be vineyards along eighty-nine A, a wine tasting center, village center. This, the wine country theme will be throughout the project. How we design our entrances, our street furniture, all of those things will pick up that theme. There'll be a village center in the, in the middle of the project, which will as well pick up that theme and that architectural flavor. The next graphic, I think, is the aerial that shows you the location, the eighty-nine and Vine location. This site, I, I mean, maybe it's a good thing that we've waited so long to get this done. The, I'm, my client, probably Jay, doesn't feel that way. But this is such a prime site. It's such a premier corridor between you and Sedona. What a place to expose the heart of wine country, the way we will be doing it. If we had done this in two thousand and seven, this would have been an entirely different project. And so, I think maybe it's been worth the wait for Cottonwood, and hopefully, ultimately, for Jay. Again, I'm, just, we'll walk you briefly through this master development plan. Craig, do we have a pointer? I, I wanna, if you look along eighty-nine A, I don't have a pointer, I probably couldn't use it if I did. That whole front entry, about two-thirds of the property, it's this one. Okay, let's see. Oh, okay. That will all be planted with vineyards. And we, I've never seen a project that put this much open space along a major arterial road. I think that's really exciting. All of this area will be developed later. That's our mixed-use area. There'll be some multifamily residential, resort, hotel, restaurant, commercial, office, those types of uses in this area. One of the things that the city wanted us to do was put regional serving, commercial along eighty-nine A instead of down here, where it had been in the old county plan. The other thing that the city wanted us to do was to keep our wash corridors open and natural rather than a golf course, and we have done that. This connection is on Cornville, but we're starting the project in this area and moving south. So, this will not be, I want our neighbors to know, that part, that road connection is not going in right away. This is gonna be our main entry and the focus of the development. This will be phased in. We think even the residential can take as many as ten years. Maybe we're pessimistic. These are the amenities for the community. Trails, parks, all of which meet your standards, all of which were required in our annexation agreement. A hundred and seventy-nine acres of open space, three miles of trails. The next one, oh, oops. Practice. No rehearsal. Again, just the idea of, we want to make this very welcoming, very wine country-oriented tasting room, and, and show off the wines from this, this area. Village center that, again, shopping, dining, et cetera. And then the main reason why we're here tonight, which is the infrastructure. The blue to the north is the water treatment facility. Steve really explained it to you. There are a minimum of two wells, treatment, storage, pumping. I think the important thing from your perspective is all of this infrastructure, water and wastewater, is now fully on this site. Previous planning had it partially to the south of us, maybe something to the north, but it's all on this site. It will be approved and accepted. It will meet all regulatory standards, not just yours, county, state. There are a lot of standards for these types of facilities. Once your city staff inspects it and accepts it, it's dedicated to you and becomes part of your system, as Steve said. Traffic improvements are going to be controlled by ADOT, by the county, and by Cottonwood. We have to work with all three agencies. We have to do a traffic impact analysis. We have to update it. We've done them along the years. This one will be updated, and we'll have to put in whatever improvements, particularly ADOT on eighty-nine A, tells us to do. I want to make the announcement that we agree with our neighbors from Verdi Santa Fe South, that we will work very hard to avoid roundabouts on eighty-nine A. Just making that public for you, Jay. We also have to update the water and wastewater master plans, and we have to update our drainage plan. Craig, can you get back to the master plan, the, that, yeah, that one? This is what I wanted to point out. This area, right here on the edge of our property, there are, we rode, we drove by them today on our way up and met there with John. There are large and sized washes that come down across that corner. On our plan, retaining that area is open space. That wash corridor is going to be maintained, but that's the area that we think has impacted to the south of us. So, we want to reassure our neighbors. We understand where it's coming from. We have the obligation legally, as has been pointed out to you, we cannot cause adverse impacts to the south. That's highly regulated. Our drainage plan will be revised. It will be public document, and everyone can see that we want to have our wash corridors the right size. We appreciate that our neighbors have told us their problems. That enables us to address them on our project, and we're very happy about that. Again, this will be phased in over ten years, and the infrastructure commitment that was made in our pre-annexation development agreement is being reiterated here to you tonight. The final details of our infrastructure plan will be worked out in plating, and what is required is going to be provided to serve this development. And Mr. Stuckey has also offered to continue to meet with the Verdi Santa Fe residents. We want to be a good neighbor. I've said we want to lure them to the other side of the street, which happens. At any rate, we're very happy. We hope you will approve our infrastructure agreement. We hope you will approve our infrastructure agreement, and we're ready to get started. And if you have any questions, we're all here.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation again.
Mayor and council staff is here too, and we'd be happy to answer any questions, council.
Okay. Are there any members of the public tonight that would like to ask any questions or address the council? Sir? If, sir, if you would, sir, you'll need to come up to the podium and state your name. Thank you.
We promise no roundabouts on 89A. How about Cornville Road?
Yeah. We share with you your concern about roundabouts, and we would feel the same way about Cornville. That decision is not going to be up to us and not even maybe up to you, as we all know. But that's why I kind of mentioned it, to enlist everybody's help. We may have some impact that way, if we all, you know, say that.
And when will we know what ADOT will approve or not?
Well, we have to do a full traffic impact analysis. They have to review that. That is the one thing I'm concerned that could delay us. We don't know how long that can take. We may need your help in moving them along, but we will have those discussions and the city engineers will be involved with us in that effort.
And they'll base their decision off of safety and traffic flow and all those other concerns, correct?
Yes, and it's also a stakeholder-informed process. I don't think the stakeholders drive the ultimate decision, but there are opportunities for neighbors, the city, to be heard.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Robert Gooddale, a question. How, you conveyed earlier how many single-family homes and how many multifamily homes you're planning. How many individual subdivisions are there going to be, and are any of them gated? Going to be gated?
Yes, and I'm going to try to look if I can look at my master plan. The number of subdivisions could change from the way we had it laid out before. I had my page opened and then I closed it. It looks like about 15 subdivisions that I can see, but don't hold me to that. There may be, there may be more. But the unit count has stayed the same from the 2007 plan to this plan. It's exactly the same. But the first, I would say we're doing, Craig, the first two or three subdivisions initially, or would it be one?
We'd be starting in the first phase.
The first phase.
Yeah, a lot of this is going to depend on what happens.
Mr. Peterson, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium too. We're recording the meeting, so we won't be able to hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm Craig Peterson of Brookfield. You know, once we get into the project, we'll learn a lot more about if there's demand for a gated neighborhood. Nothing at the main entrances will be gated. There may be, like in Verdi Santa Fe.
Mr. Peterson, I'm so sorry, you're going to speak right into that microphone.
There may be, like in Verdi Santa Fe, a gated neighborhood within, but we just don't have those plans quite yet.
Any other questions for council, for the developers? Are there any members of city staff that would care to address any comments tonight? I know we've all been working very hard on this for years and years and years and years. Okay. All right, then council, what's your pleasure tonight?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the proposed infrastructure and assurance agreement between the city, Verdi Santa Fe Limited Partnership, and Brookfield Communities Incorporated, subject to approval of the final terms in form of agreement by our city attorney.
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion, council member five for second. Is there any favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, then the motion is approved. And just for all the folks here tonight, this is the second recent meeting in what will be a long string of public meetings about this development, so please stay tuned. Thank you. Okay, next up is lease and services agreement with Wiseman Aviation, Inc. to provide fixed base operator services at the Cottonwood Airport. Just give my folks, give them a minute here. Got the green light. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, good news, at least we hope it's good news. Many of you have noticed, and our airport commission's talked about for a long time, that our airport is one of the underutilized assets of the city. And one of the biggest things that stopped it from growing, stopped it from being utilized is, one, we don't have any personnel up there at all. And when someone flies in, their first vision of Cottonwood is often an empty airport. And that is going to be our gateway to a large part of, to the world. So we have advertised for an FBO. You're familiar with the process we went through. We are bringing you a contract today with a company out of Flagstaff, Arizona called Wiseman Aviation. They currently operate as the FBO or fixed base operator out of Flagstaff, Winslow, and Gallup. They're interesting, interested in expanding to Cottonwood. The owner, Orville Wiseman, is here today, and he's going to provide personnel on the field. He's going to make major, not major, but he's going to make improvements to the airport, especially aesthetic improvements, signage improvements, safety improvements, security improvements. He's going to provide the personnel that we've been looking for, for quite a while. The airport commission did meet about this. I apologize, that wasn't in your packet, because they met after I submitted it. It was a unanimous vote from the airport commission. And should the council choose to move forward with this, he could be moving in possibly in May. We've got a few details to work out, but that could be happening. He will be sharing, he'll be taking over a lot of the staff responsibilities at the airport. Runway checks, fence checks, fuel checks, mowing, light checks, all of those, he'll be taking over all those activities. Obviously, the city under this contract would remain responsible for large capital improvements, as well as in the agreement, the FBO would be responsible to respond to all maintenance requests and fix anything that can be fixed in one hour, not requiring special licensing or tooling. So in other words, if it's something they can show up quick, get it done, it'll be on them. Everything from changing light filters to changing air, light bulbs and those kind of things, air filters and light bulbs, I think I said that backwards, sorry. So they'll take care of that. Everything beyond that one hour would remain the responsibility of the city. But again, the big ongoing expenses, the fuel checks, the mowing, all that would become the responsibility of the FBO. They will be paying percentage gross and a fuel flowage fee. We did offer in the, within this contract to give them a kind of cap their payment to the city at a maximum of $15,000 for the first three years. Why $15,000? That's what we would expect to be losing, if you will, because we are giving them the fuel sales, but they're taking over a lot of these mowing operations. And if you look at that, the city would basically be down about $15,000. So he's going to be paying that to the city for the first three years. After those three years, it's actually going to be higher, it could be higher than that. And we estimate it actually could be double that within a few years. I know he, he's hoping it'll be double that because that means he's making more money because it is a percentage of his gross. Obviously, a big part of what he'll be doing is marketing the area, marketing Cottonwood to bring more traffic to Cottonwood. So that is his goal. He is here today, if you have any questions. Great, thank you. Do we have questions for Mr. Wiseman?
I had a question for Morgan before turning to you.
Sure, please.
Mr. Wiseman, if that's okay. Is it, are private fuel tank owners able to use their own fuel themselves for their own personal use without charge?
Per our commercial standards, they do pay a 10 cents flowage fee just for being located on the airport, but they are able to use their own fuel. For their own use? For their own use. They are, they are not able to sell it, that's correct. Okay, yes.
I have a question to it, and I don't know who the question's for. At one point, you had talked about wanting to get a kitchen or lunch, you know, type in the airport. Is that something that's also being considered or maybe a future?
It's definitely something that could be considered in the future. Right now, we've talked, we've spoken to several local restaurant owners, and we just don't have the traffic to, for them to make a capital investment. However, a little more activity now, and the biggest part that this FBO will be doing that I'm most excited about is counting our operations. We'll know exactly how many people are coming in, how many aircraft. If we do get a complaint, they'll know who is flying, when they were flying, all that. All those numbers will then give a business data to use to make that upfront capital investment. Now, there will be very minor, he's talking about doing a little kitchenette in the terminal, again, very minor. But something else we talked about, when we talked to several of our restaurant owners is, we have good restaurants in Cottonwood. Rather than try to maybe compete with them, do we try to connect them to the airport? Through transportation, through the bus routes, through the trail that we're working on, it'll be a five-minute walk from Old Town to the airport. So maybe we should try to connect them. But then, yes, someday the goal would be to get a restaurant up there, but not part of this agreement.
Right. I guess, one of my, the reason I ask that is because there is no rental car service up there, and so you kind of, you fly in and unless you know somebody and can get to a restaurant, there aren't any restaurants really that are walking distance, potentially one, but it would be uphill coming back and, you know. I don't know how much fun that would be for most of us, so, you know.
And we may want to ask Mr. Wiseman to address that. So he will be operating the airport courtesy car, and because he'll have people there seven days a week, it'll be more accessible to the public as opposed to, we can only rent it out Monday through Friday, so that will be used more. But I know he's even speaking about to different rental car companies about getting rental cars available there.
That would be awesome to get just even a couple vehicles in there that people could rent when they, when they fly in.
Another thing we're working on, just in case that doesn't work out, is Enterprise, who is our one rental car company in town, they will drive a car to the airport to pick somebody up, for somebody who wants to rent a car.
Enterprise will? Is that advertised at the airport or is?
We're working with them on getting it advertised, yes.
And they're closed on Sundays too, so there are limitations to Enterprise as well. We have an admin services car.
Are you going to drive it?
But the city will cover it, the liability insurance.
Uber, Uber.
Or we can get Morgan to do it in his spare time. Right.
They'll call Uber and they'll be set.
Would you like to hear from Mr. Wiseman? Sure, if there's no other questions now for staff, that'd be great. Mr. Wiseman? Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for considering our proposal, our lease. Morgan and I have spent a lot of time together the last month, you know, going over all the details, as well as the services we're going to be providing. And so, how about I just give you like a 60-second, it'll probably turn into more like a five-minute talk, but just a little bit of history and why I think we're a great fit for this and why I have an interest in Cottonwood. Just real quick bio, born and raised in Tucson. I graduated from NAU in '85 with a degree in accounting. I lived and worked at Phoenix for a few years, corporate tax accountant. While my friends were studying for CPA exam, I was out learning to fly. And then I left Arizona for 10 years. I met my wife in NAU, she's from back east, and somehow I ended up in Ohio. I left a really good corporate flying job to come back to Flagstaff to start a fixed base operation. And over the years, we've been in Winslow for about 12 years, to be totally candid, I never in a million years thought I would end up there. But that is one of the four fire tanker bases, and it gets quite busy during a, you know, busy fire season, eastern part of the state. That, that, it was just an FBO to start. It morphed into a very similar, what we're going to do here, aircraft, I mean, airport management. And by that, what I mean is, we're boots on the ground, we're checking the runways every day, we're checking light bulbs, you know, runway lights. We're issuing notices to airmen. If there's an issue out there, we're there to respond right away. And it's a good situation because, yeah, there's some forgiveness or rents or whatever, but it, that is far exceeded by the fact that you have another vested party at the airport that has just as big interest, if not more, and seeing that your airport does well and the customers are taken care of. And then going back about four years ago, again, I never in a million years thought I'd end up even further east, with Galton, Mexico, and I'm actually flying over tomorrow morning, even their public works director, just to talk about the airport. And we do the exact same thing there. And it's worked out real well for us because, you know, it's turned into this hub and spoke network of FBOs, which I never originally designed, but the reality is this, you know, when we went through the recession, a lot of the smaller operators basically went away. And it's really hard to be able to provide some of the services we can provide in these outer locations on an on-demand basis if you were just a private operator at the airport, if that makes sense. So I have, I have mechanics. We just, I mean, we've changed engines, you know, we have, you know, a location, we've been to Page before, up towards Grand Canyon, whatever. I've actually had one of my trainers get a flat tire down here one time, I had to come down and change it. But we have a lot of equipment, a lot of expertise now, due to the fact we've been in business for 19 years and so forth, that we can respond. I mean, God forbid, you know, I was in Gallup two weeks and a huge fire broke out north of Gallup, and they're like, why was it with you? We haven't anything around here. You know, hopefully something like that doesn't happen. If it did, I could load up extra fuel trucks and send personnel down here if I had to and help support that. Hopefully that doesn't happen, because it's really stressful. But, you know, various activities, we host various military activities. We've got, you know, some special events going on. Coming up here, we're going to be quite busy. And anyway, it, all that lends itself to things we can do here. For example, we're, you know, some of Morgan has specifically mentioned, we're bringing jet fuel into the airport. That's where you are seriously handicapped right now, because when I went into business 19 years ago, the mix at a sort of a typical general aviation airport is about 70% jet fuel, 30% avgas. Avgas being what piston-powered airplanes burn. Today, it's about 90/10. And so you're servicing about 10% of that market. Whether you like it or not, the reality is, the middle class can't afford an airplane anymore. It's kind of haves and the have-nots, and the haves went from your piston twin Cessna stuff into turbine-powered airplanes, if that makes sense, kind of, they keep moving up. And you don't lose the volume, it shifts, those airplanes actually consume more fuel. And, you know, I know things, I was here a week or so ago talking to the public, and why do you want to come down here? It goes, because I know things you don't know. And for example, right now, when the winds are coming really strong out of the south, most operators won't land in Sedona because it's trying to get down the canyon and the grate and everything else. Guess where they divert right now? Flagstaff, all right? A lot of those operators, turboprop, light jets, could come down here and it makes a lot more sense. It's an easier drive, it's a shorter drive. And so, you know, to be totally honest, I see a market here that's, that needs to be nurtured and grown and catered to, and we'll do that, we'll market it. You know, honestly, we get, if we get calls up north, and it's something to the effect like they're coming perhaps down north of here a little ways, we might try to persuade them to come down here. You know, the limitation is to be the weight bearing on the runway. Your 4,000 pounds per axle right now is 12,000 pounds max, so that's typically a King Air 200, maybe a 300, some of your Citation jet series. So, you know, residents might be concerned, and I see Gulfstreams coming in tomorrow. The reality is, they're not, they really shouldn't even be going into Sedona, because if you look at Sedona, which I just found out recently, their, their weight bearing is not ready for those kind of aircraft. You know, I think in time, we could do some things at the airport, make it a little bit longer, maybe get an overlay, beef up the runway. But again, you know, I, I've been coming down here, I live in Flag, I have four kids, two of which were born in Flagstaff, and we've been coming down Cottonwood for a long time, for various things. I've been talking about what they were, I'm not even going to say. And I got to be honest, being from the desert, I don't like being cold as I get older. And so, a good friend of mine bought a place down here recently, and I can see me eventually doing that. So I have sort of some selfish concerns, I'll be totally frank, about coming down here. You know, it's going to take a while, this sort of thing doesn't turn around overnight. It's getting the staff where I need to have them, it's just getting everything where we need it. But every place has basically the same footprint in terms of the level of service and amenities we have. And that would, that would be no different down here. You know, I have a model at these outer locations with a certain number of staff that works real well, seven-day coverage, just a couple days where they overlap so they can go out and cut the weeds and do the things that need, need to be done around the airport. And, you know, the other thing is, is we don't have jet fuel storage here. We're going to bring a large truck down, we're going to do basically storage and distribution out of that truck. And where I really shine in that is, is I'm bringing fuel up by 17 all the time, all right? Or, let's say about 800,000 gallon a year customer right now for my fuel fender. They give us pretty preferential treatment and whatnot, but the point being is, a full load of jet fuel is 8,000 gallons, weighs 6.7 pounds per gallon, that's about all they can carry. They can carry a little more avgas because it's six pounds per gallon, but they typically don't. But let's say the truck, the truck I'm bringing down is just under 4,000 gallons, this is the truck I started up Gallup with. This is the truck I started up Gallup with when I didn't have a fuel farm over there to start with. Anyway, we'll let the truck get down a couple thousand gallons. You know, Flagstaff, every couple of days this time of year is getting jet fuel. And we'll just divert the truck into here, we'll offload a couple thousand gallons and send the rest up to Flag. And it really helps me because it helps me keep Flagmore full too. So, wait until the tank gets down where I can take 8,000 gallons. And that only adds a couple cents a gallon in the freight because it's not far off the freeway. Same thing with avgas. Typically on the avgas, because it's such a small market these days, depending on pricing, we, you would pull the load out Tyler, Texas, clear or not, it comes all the way from there. I pulled it as far as Baton Rouge, Louisiana, but that's because there was no supply anywhere. But if it's coming out of Phoenix, well, a lot of times split across the locations because it just, you know, I was talking to Morgan, you got 7,000 gallons sitting out there right now. It doesn't sell real fast. You know, if you're a private entity, that doesn't cash flow out real well for you. So, for us, I don't think we're gonna keep the tank at 7,000. There's assurances in the contract because there's been issues with other people in the past that we're not gonna run out. But we can sit there, maintain, let's say, maybe a fresher supply, more current supply by splitting with the other locations. And that's quite frankly, something nobody else is gonna be able to do. I'm really excited about this and open questions, so.
Great. Questions?
Sounds like a wonderful idea.
Well, thank you. And getting back to the transportation, you know, being a little more senior, some of my staff and stuff, and all these people start using this Uber thing. I'm like, what the heck's that about? Yeah. But even like over in Gallup, there's Lyft. I don't know exactly what all you have down here, but that is really popular pilots these days. Versus renting a car, especially if you're just gonna go in town and eat or something. I don't, you, I haven't tried it down here. Do you have Uber or Lyft or anything like that?
Yeah, we do.
Huh?
I don't think so.
Yeah, we do.
You do, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Well, it'll just be a matter of time. So, I am talking, I am a location for Enterprise and Flagstaff. And I'm having a meeting and I'm gonna talk about, there we keep two cars on-site all the time. We write the contracts. And I'm gonna see if I can release one car down here so that we know, because, yeah, you're right, the office is closed. Not at the airport, but in town, those offices are closed. So, transportation is a big part. And getting back to the food, the food's a great idea, but honestly, it's, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna boost as much traffic as you think. I think there's better ideas to come downtown, get people to come downtown here and see all the wonderful things that have happened, you know, in recent, recent time.
I just know, I have a friend who's a pilot and I asked him to take me out because I wanted to see Cottonwood from the sky. And he says, well, we'll do it, but we're gonna fly into Payson, is it Payson or Prescott? Payson.
It's Payson. Payson has a very popular restaurant.
And eat and you're buying. And I said, you're on. I just wanna see Cottonwood from the sky.
So, being a little bit selfish here, I love when you ask me, did you buy fuel while you was there?
Huh? No, he didn't.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Yeah, it's hard to stay in business. It's great to track, but you know, at the end of the day, I'm paying a percentage in the fuel flow and everything. So, we want to encourage people to come in and actually be customers of the airport, not just users of the airport.
Right.
If that makes sense.
No, I was just curious because of the lack of, of cars. And I think having, having vehicles would solve that problem because you're all 100% right. We have wonderful restaurants and we want to encourage people to go to our restaurants.
Right. But the problem too is, like I have a crew rate in Flagstaff, but it's still, still so cost prohibitive by the time you rent them the car. Most people would never do it. But, you know, I'll give you an example. Winslow, people fly on Winslow and they walk it. I don't know if it's a long way, but you know, a lot of Passadas over there. We get a lot of people on Sundays that fly in and they will walk. It's, what is that? It's gotta be almost two miles to go eat. I'm like, you sure? Yeah, okay. But, yeah. And the car is great. We have crew cars at all locations. The plan is eventually to bring our own car in the location. You'll see it driving around town because it's, it's got stuff all over. The company, crew car, so forth and so on. So, yeah.
Awesome. I think it's a great idea.
I had a, just a couple of questions. What about marketing? Like, what, what are your plans to, to market the airport?
Well, probably the single biggest thing besides word of mouth, I mean, you know, because of where I'm at, I see a lot, a lot of different people. And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna tell you how I foresee this unfolding, all right? Is some of the residents are gonna be okay with this. Some of them near the airport may not be. But we might be able to modify the traffic pattern a little bit too. We've talked about that. Maybe start keeping the traffic south of the airport. The train's a little higher, but it's away from the houses and so forth. But, so there'll be some, some turboprop and light jet traffic. I can almost guarantee you'll start seeing a lot, I won't say a lot, but you'll start seeing some Blackhawks and things. I know you had the Osprey coming here with the other Osprey and all that. But they came here because they had to, not because they wanted to. You might see some of that. You know, we have relationships. There's a lot of traffic that moves from Colorado. I mean, I just had a unit from New York and they go out to Fort Irwin National Training Center. I mean, January 3rd in Flagstaff, I had 27 helicopters, the whole brigade spent the night, you know, Patches, Blackhawks, Chinooks. They all know us. And there's a site you can go to called airnav.com, all right? You'll see our logo on that. And something we do, if you happen to look at Sedona on airnav.com, there's gonna be a company underneath the Sedona airports and say, close to that, Wiseman Aviation and Flagstaff. I mean, if you go over and look at Farmington, New Mexico, you're gonna see on that page, Wiseman Aviation in Gallup. And so, we're gonna do the same thing here. In fact, I'm having a lot of internal conflict right now. Do I put both Cottonwood and Flagstaff on the Sedona webpage, you know, on that? But that's, a lot of pilots go on there because it's got all the airport information. It's got our prices on there, which are actually guaranteed. And that'll be probably one of the single biggest ways. Something else we do, we just got back. There's really only one trade show in my industry that on a national basis that matters. It's called the National Business Aircraft Association S schedulers and dispatchers. It was in Long Beach last year. We did a double-size display with a brand-new booth. Now, I'm gonna have to redo it because I put, and, you know, it wasn't like Flagstaff was giant print. Winslow and Gallup are all same size next to each other. It's had three locations. Flagstaff's 24 hours. That's the other thing too, is everything's connected via a voice, you know, a voice sys, a phone system. Flagstaff's 100, 200, 300. This would be 400 series. If my guy's outside doing something, the phone rolls over to Flagstaff and there's always somebody there. I heard, I heard somebody today going, okay, which location were you calling? Because the phone call got a little screwy. And we straightened out, okay, you're calling Cottonwood, all right? All right, how can I help you? And she went in and put all the information and, you know, it happened to be Gallup today because they were out fueling the airplane or something. It was a lot of helicopters that are coming through military. And so, we're able to offer that level of service that the guy that was just by himself outside doing something. So, I don't know if you consider that marketing or not, but it's networking. At the schedulers and dispatchers, I've already bought a premium booth next year. It's in San Antonio. And you're gonna be right there next to the other locations.
Good.
Yeah. And, you know, honestly, when I go to that, there's two places I market against mainly. Grand Canyon and the other one's up the road. So, this, this, this is a bit of a, let's say, a strategic plan to maybe capture some more market share out of a certain airport.
We have a lot here to offer. So, I hope if there's any way the city can lend assistance in your, in your marketing, please let us know.
No, absolutely. And we, we actually brand, each location has sort of a unique branding concept. I just had all these shirts made, you know. We kind of feature Route 66 in Gallup because we're right on Route 66. We got a really cool tanker base, sure, for Winslow. Flagstaff, I call it Fort Wiseman. And, you know, down here, I think it's probably gonna have to be something about vineyards or something.
It's gonna have to be.
Be honest, I'm not a big wine drinker, but that's okay. I can promote it. So, but, yeah. We'll actually have a unique little bit of a brand niche for Cottonwood. And Morgan has shared some of that information already, but I welcome anything. You know, anything we can do, it's a win, it's a partnership. We're a part of your community, all right? And the better we do, the better you do, kind of vice versa. So, we take that pretty seriously.
Good. Last question, special events. I read in your agreement there that you would consider it, but is that something that you do at your other airports?
Yeah. So, for example, Flagstaff has that airport open house flying type thing every year. And in the last, I don't know, so many years, we did like a USO-style dinner with a big band and everything in the hangar. It was in conjunction with the EA and all that. They, I don't know, there was a little bit of a conflict of who thought what. So, it's like, here's my hangar, here's some money. But, you know, that day, like last year, we donated, I think, over 600 gallons of avgas for the Young Eagle flights. Winslow, we do do the big band dinner and all that. And the residents around there love it. And we have, they actually formed a nonprofit that I'm part of for the Winslow flying. Gallup, the only thing I can really say for Gallup at this point, because I haven't really been approached about, but they do a big Christmas present flying for the reservation. And last year, I put the, I put the fuel below my price. It was over 50 airplanes, so I couldn't just give it away because it was a lot of fuel. But it was the biggest turnout they ever had. And, you know, whatever we can do down here, it makes sense. You know, I've heard about some of the stuff in the past, both good and bad. You know, I'll be more than happy to promote an event, an event down here or more than one. I mean, because honestly, you know, most of the public doesn't have a clue what goes on in the airport. You know, whether it's you're sick and you're put on medevac and you're flown out of here, organ harvest or you're pat, some, you know, not so much here because you don't have freight coming in, but you might someday. You never know. And that's another thing they could divert down here instead of some of the places they go if they had jet fuel, the FedEx caravan and stuff like that. But, you know, anything you do to increase the awareness of the public, the airport, is obviously better for, for your cause in terms of funding and supporting the airport, which in turn is better for my cause, so.
Well, that's my concern too, is that I do think it's one of the better economic drivers that we have here in the community. But most of the public isn't aware of the airport, its history and how important it is to us. So, any kind of event we could put on up there that would help promote that and share it with the public, I think. Something that is oriented for the public, not just for gearheads and.
Something I've just been doing, I was talking, I'm working about, and I'm not getting any traction on it. I thought, man, this is a great idea. Actually, I've contacted Amazon to see if I can get Amazon lockers put at the outer locations. You know, just people coming out. I don't know quite where we would put it. But something like that where people actually come to the airport and they see what's going on outside the fence.
What's it called now?
An Amazon locker. I don't know if you've ever heard of that?
I'm not.
Well, you've heard of Amazon, right? They have lockers that they put in various businesses for people that maybe they've got delivery issues, whatever. But, you know, depending on the hours of the business, you go there and your package is in a locker.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah. But I, I thought it was a great idea, especially out in the eastern locations where a lot of people don't actually have physical addresses. But they aren't writing me back, so I guess not. But, you know, the point being is, yeah, try to get the public out there. We get spectators at all the places and, you know, we'll continue to encourage that. Got a few ideas about terminal. We really like to cook in my business, the fire, the air attack guys just showed up yesterday in Flag. And it's just a barbecue fest till the monsoons come. Sometimes they get upset because they have nice tri-tip in the smoker and then they end up going flying all day on a fire. But, you know, try to do some things with some food out there to get, to get the pilots to come and some of the public wants to show up, whatever. Just simple things like hot dogs and hamburgers and that sort of thing. I've been a voice cast American Aviation Post, you know, sponsor, explorer, whatever it was called so long ago. But if somebody has an interest in that, I'm more than happy to, you know, make that available. Have, you know, mechanic come down, talk to them, you know, I can talk to them, whatever. So, or even take them up to Flagstaff and maybe let them meet the air traffic controllers or whatever. So, you know, the thing about aviation is, pretty much anybody you see that usually has a lot of passion about it. It's just one of those things that people aren't lukewarm, so.
We've noticed that.
I'm the same way, yeah. Unfortunately, it brings out some bad feelings too. It took me about 15 years to figure that one out. But, you know, the reality is, if you've got something you want to do, I've done it at all the locations where we, we've sponsored so many different events. I can't even.
Great.
So, if you want to have an open house, you have some kind of great idea. You know, the Flagstaff EA group, you're supposed to Prescott, probably get them involved too. If you want to do Young Eagles flights, that sort of thing, you know, donate the fuel. I'll facilitate it and get the stuff down there, so.
Okay, great. All right. Any other questions?
I just think it's wonderful. I mean, we've looked for an FBO for a long time, a fixed base operator. We've had some guys come in that were adequate, but they definitely didn't have any kind of vision. And so, this is very exciting to see this vision that you've got and that you're working with Morgan. So, I'm, I'm really excited by it.
Well, thank you. I'm excited too. And I, you know, it's, it took me a little bit, a little bit of time after I did my research and everything. You know, the staff's excited. We're, we've already got the wheels rolling because some things take a while to get in place on the possibility that this happens, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, what's your?
Motion?
Yeah, there's no other further discussion, yeah.
I'll do it. I move to approve the substance and material terms of the proposed agreement with Wiseman Aviation to provide airport fixed-based operator FBO services at the Cottonwood Airport and to authorize and direct the airport manager and city attorney to draft the final form of contract for execution by the mayor.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Al House made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's approved. Thank you very much. All right. Item three is appointment of council representatives to serve on various policy committees of the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. And this is brought to our attention by the Vice Mayor, so I'm gonna let you take it over. Thank you.
Let me get there from here. I was given an email that stated that there were some, the League of Cities and Towns every year has these commissions or these committees that address various topics that come before the league. And there is very little representation from northern Arizona. About the only one we have attending or participating in any of these is Sedona. And they're, they're not participating in all of them. So, I thought it would be important for someone from northern Arizona, in particular us, to get a couple of other representatives out there. We don't need to fill the groups up, but if we have any council members that are interested in a specific topic, you'll see that we got provided extra printouts today. This goes into more detail, which I'm very grateful for. If we have any members interested in participating these, now it probably is gonna be time-intensive as Councilmember Tosk and I were briefly discussing in that they're most busy, most busy May, June, and July. That's when they're gonna be, you're gonna be driving down to Phoenix or Cave Creek or wherever it is that they have their meetings going on. So, keeping that in mind, I thought it was important to make the offer to council to see if there was anybody interested in attending some of these committees. Rudy, our Deputy City Manager, actually attends the Budget Finance and Economic Development Committee. So, I'm very comfortable with that. I mean, if somebody else is interested in attending that as well, but Rudy's very good at keeping us involved. The rest, however, we don't, we don't have any representation in. There's a General Administration, Human Resources, and Elections. There's a Transportation, Infrastructure, and Public Works. Public Safety, Military Affairs, and the Courts, which I'm very interested in. Neighborhoods, Sustainability, and Quality of Life. So, there's, there's really, I mean, there's five, but there's four that we really need someone else from northern Arizona to be there to represent us.
And Kyla, they're all in person?
You know, I didn't ask, but typically they are. I'm sure they have people that'll call in though. I could, I could reach out and find out from the league, but I, I can't answer that right now. I don't know.
And is it just, just for those three months? That you have to, the expectation is to be down once, one meeting a month is what it said, isn't that correct?
You know, he didn't say, in looking at the email, it was.
I think there was an earlier email that they said at least once a month for those three months.
Right. Providing, that they will provide us with dates and times for upcoming May, excuse me, May, June, and July as they get closer to the May date. But he didn't give me any idea whether it's one, two, or three.
And I have served on committees for the league and they do allow people to call in.
There you go. Excellent.
And can you tell us a little bit about the time commitment?
Well, this was, this was like a special group that was put together for the public safety retirement.
Oh, I see.
So, they were meeting, you know, once a month, I believe it was.
I'm definitely, I'm interested in the quality of life, neighborhood sustainability, quality of life. You know, I just, it's hard for me without knowing more information how to commit because, just because of the drive and haven't figured out how to retire yet.
I haven't either. Can you see that?
Are there any other council members that would be interested in serving?
If they allow telephonic appearances, my one concern that I was, you know, mentioning to Councilmember Ellen is we don't have the schedule of the meetings. I don't want to commit to something that I might not be able to make, you know, a majority of the meetings. But I'd be interested in pretty much any of them. They seem like. They seem like some of the issues that would face, that, you know, for example, General Administration, Human Resources, Elections, would be pertinent. You know, every committee seems to have issues that would be relevant for the city. So I'd be willing to, to take any one that wasn't covered. Again, with the caveat that the telephonic, as our city manager did indicate, that we, and it looks like Ms. Rodriguez is also nodding as well, that we could call in, that would probably be feasible.
Okay. Is there one of these that just really moves you, though? Like, General Administration, Human Resources?
That's fine, those, all of those are, are fine, it looks as though Councilmember Ellen expressed interest in the Public Safety, Military Affairs, and the Courts. You expressed interest, Neighborhood Sustainability, and Quality of Life, and we already have a representative who attends Budget, Finance, and Economic Development, so I'm happy to take an, an assigned one. So that would be fine.
Can we then maybe have staff or Vice Mayor follow up and find out what those dates are? And then let each council member that's expressed an interest know? And then we can give them a thumbs up or thumbs down, on whether or not we can attend?
Absolutely. I'll email him tomorrow and say, these are the council members that are interested. However, we do need to know dates and times before we make a commitment, and then I'll email you back at that point.
That'd be great.
Just, we just need to get it done before May.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thanks for bringing it to our attention, appreciate it. Anything else on that? All right, then.
Mr. Mayor? You know, one of the other committees that I didn't see listed on here was the Resolution Committee, which is the resolutions they put together before the start of the legislative session. Those always seem pretty important, too. I don't know what the requirements are to have a representative on those, but.
Diane was usually participating, Dan Jones was particularly participative in that. I'll ask at the same time.
Okay. Yeah, I think they email only once a year when that is coming up, but if we could find out the dates on that, that'd be great.
And if you need some help finding some information, Vice Mayor, I'll help you out.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next is Claims and Adjustments.
Move we pay the claims and adjustments?
Second that. Vice Mayor made the motion, Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Motion's approved. And then up last is Discussion, Consideration, Possible Legal Action Regarding the Employment, Performance, and Compensation of the City Magistrate. Pursuant to Arizona law and vice statutes, the council may vote to convene an executive session to discuss this matter, subject to the magistrate's right to compel the council to conduct this discussion in an open meeting. And Judge Lasota, you did email me and say that you'd like to hold it in open session, and that sounds good to me, if it's good with the rest of council? And if we could, sir, before you start, if we could have Amanda Wilber come up and just kind of introduce this item for council, and give us a little refresher course on our employee evaluation forms?
Do you want me to introduce myself first?
If you could, we'll just have her introduce the item, then we'll, we'll have you write up. So, thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman. Amanda Wilber, HR Manager. As you know, tonight is your annual evaluation of Judge Lasota, our presiding magistrate. You reappointed Judge Lasota for a two-year term last April, and you have the right to evaluate him annually, which may or may not result in an adjustment to his salary. So with that being said, the, the process that you go through, which the process was outlined in the packets that you received, Judge Lasota did his self-evaluation, sent it to me. It was in your packet. You all got your packets with your self-evaluation, the general evaluation sheet that you'll be filling out tonight, as well as the Code of Ethics, his contract, et cetera. Tonight, you have already been able to look at the evaluation form. The consensus from when we came up with this was council didn't want to have individual scores in evaluations in general out there. So there's going to be one general consensus evaluation sheet, which I believe Matt has already. Matt's going to be the tallier tonight, so each category that was scored by each council member will be taken by Matt. He'll average that score based on the number of council members that observed the action and actually scored. And then at the end, Matt will average all the scores in general, so there's one combined score. Are there any other questions about the process before we get started?
I think that, that clears it up for me, is it cleared up for the rest of the council? I know this is kind of a process we've been working on for the last year and a half or so, but I just wanted to kind of give us a refresher course on how we go through this. So, any other questions for Ms. Wilber? No? So when we're done scoring, then we'll just roll those on down the line to Matt, and hopefully he has a calculator, or spreadsheet. He'll combine them, and then that, that will be the cumulative score of this body.
And then what, what happens to the forms we passed to Matt?
Good question.
It's filed, Judge's file, all right.
I, I think that's what was decided before. But I know part of the issue was, you didn't want to have a form itself, you wanted the cumulative form. So, I mean, the combined form, that's what we decided is going into the personnel file. I, I don't know that we completely addressed.
The, the reason I asked the question is, because at the last review we did, we didn't turn. Turn them in. The expectation was someone was going to turn in one form. And I, I understand now that that person is going to be Matt, but last time we didn't turn the forms in.
Last time, there was a little bit of confusion, I think.
That's, that's my question of.
Right.
I think we're trying to clear up some of the issues that we had with the first valuation. So, I, I believe what would then, I mean, I don't know what happens to these forms, frankly, other than they get tallied here tonight. That should inform us on, you know, what we want to do with merit increase, et cetera. So that's kind of the score that we base our evaluation off of.
As, as I recall, Mr. Mayor, the discussion was that these are simply worksheets for the council, that, that this becomes the official evaluation for the contract employee. So, I mean, those are, you can do whatever you want with them.
Okay.
Public records, and now that, that was the exact right term, because to the extent that, that they then get forwarded, they become part of the records that the public records law, I believe, would consider made or kept in connection with your evaluation. Gives them a layer, a level of formality that would make them public.
Got it, okay. So then that cumulative form is what would then go in the magistrate's personnel file, and, okay, got it. Does that clarify? Here, okay. Thank you. Judge Lasota, thanks, sorry for that.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Councilmember. Judge Lasota from the municipal court. I haven't done this before, I don't know what procedure you want me to follow about me talking? Are you guys talking first? Interested by yourself in how I need to perform this.
If, if you'd like to present to us on your past year, that'd be, that'd be great.
Okay, I, I thought that's what the purpose of the self-evaluation form was. You want me to go over the things that I've already done before? I don't know what councils want to hear or don't want to hear at this point.
I think we all read it.
Certainly.
Didn't we? I mean, I don't think we need to rehash what's written here. I know I personally read it. I don't know if everybody else did.
I did. Yeah. Do we have any questions then, for the judge?
I, I had some just little points that I was going to go over, but I'd be happy to answer questions first.
Any questions for Judge Lasota? Okay. Then, did you want to go ahead and go over your, your points?
Sure, just, just some brief little things. First is in the way of, of updates and that type of thing. You know, I listened with interest with Chief Gazelle talking about the fact that staple, stakeholders are helping keep the city crime free. Our mental health, homeless mental health court is a big part of that. And I think we've had a lot of great success, and we continue to have a great success every year that we, we do that program. One item, I just found out today about this, can help our cause for reducing crime in the future, is we just found out today that Yabai County now has grant money that allows them to do their pre-trial services division, to give city courts now information about pre-trial release evaluations. Before, we just would see the defendant, we'd see the release questionnaire, we'd see a probable cause statement. We wouldn't see anything about what their criminal record was, we wouldn't see anything about how many failure to appear's they've had in the past, any other factors such as drug abuse, other things that make them a risk for failure to appear, or risk of reoffending, that type of thing. So now they're going to be providing this to us, to all the cities within the Yabai County, and provide that information to us, which is a better tool for us to decide who to release or who to keep in custody. Sometimes they're not always accurate, because sometimes we have to look at the individual facts of the case itself, because that may, that may throw a wrench into what pre-trial services done, did because of the particular facts of a particular case. But it will allow us to have more information, make better decisions sometimes. And the other thing is they'll have funding that'll allow us to do some other things, such as random drug testing, random alcohol testing. We haven't had the ability to do that before, because we haven't wanted to ask the city for that money, because we have, that you would have to do that kind of testing on, to be fair to everybody, it would cost the city a lot of money. So we haven't asked for that before, but now that we have this new grant funding through the county, that's going to be something, it's going to be a big, big benefit to the, to the court. Recently, I've been ordering many defendants to go to what's going to be called a Monheen Ranch cleanup. That's where a lot of the homeless and that type of people stay. It's, they're going to be meeting over near the, near the Walmart and the Carl's Jr. on May fifteenth, and they're all going to be, many people were ordered to do three hours of community service at that location to help do cleanup. The last time I was before council, Councilman Henry asked questions about the, our homeless, excuse me, about our early disposition court, and I just wanted to provide you some more information to clarify things, because I don't think that question was fully answered at the last meeting. When I, when we go through arrangements with people at their first appearance, I have a three pages of script that I go through with them to try to let them know all kinds of different things that they need to think of that day, how things are going to the future, and particularly what they're going to be doing that day. So, right at the start, I tell them that the purpose of this proceeding is to make sure you understand the charges, to explain to you your rights and options, have you underplayed the charges, and to allow you to resolve your case today in most cases. The prosecutor, Mr. Gerald, is present to make you an offer in your case, in case you wish to resolve your case today. You do not have to resolve your case today, but he's here today to accommodate those who wish to try to finish their case today, and not have to come back on another date. And then later on, near the end, I tell them, procedurally, if a plea of not guilty is entered, you'll get a pre-trial conference date. That's the next day where you meet with the prosecutor, exchange the scovry, and see if the matter can be settled without going to trial. Be advised, however, that the person you're dealing with is an attorney that represents the state of Arizona. If you're representing yourself, the prosecutor's not there to give you advice or to tell you what is in your best interest. You have to make that determination on your own. As I indicated, you have the ability to resolve your case today with the assistance of the prosecutor, if you wish to resolve your case today without coming back. So, if they want time, they have all the time. Especially DDOI cases, they usually have two continuances. And the other cases, you usually can have one or two continuances, and, you know, when there's good cause for continuances, we never turn it down. If they say they need more time on their case, they don't have to do anything that first day. They're entitled to just plead not guilty, and then they can prepare whatever they wish to before, for the next gate or day. But I just want to make sure you knew the, the full facts on, on that issue. One thing I noticed on the attachments you guys were given, a lot of the numbers, they're just regular judge salaries, they're not presiding judge salaries, because I looked through several of them, and I know that several of these have higher salaries that are presiding, judge or presiding magistrate salaries. And the other thing I want to point out is, it says a range of seventy-seven, five ninety-nine, seventy-seven, to one fourteen-three ninety-nine, sixty-seven. But back then, when that was set, that was not in hard stone. That was Mayor, Mayor Jones and the council members, Ms. Norman and Ms. Pfeiffer, and Stephen Horton, were all there at that time, when, when I brought in all kinds of facts to show other, others, other courts to show that the ranges are actually, actually higher. And I was told that for contract employees, they're not bound by that, they can go higher than that. And in fact, the council did go higher than that, to make my current salary slightly higher than that. So that's not supposed to be a set in stone, that was just put in to start with when all of the other ranges were put in for all city employees. And then, one thing just in general that came out yesterday in the New York Times from their editorial board, that just asked council members to consider for future reference. And this was done by the editorial board with the opinions of a board, it's editor and a publisher, from April eighth of two thousand eighteen. Says, no matter how judges get on the bench, the important thing is to keep them insulated as possible from outside political pressures. Instead, many lawmakers in recent years have been doing the opposite, treating judges like political pawns, who are or should be more beholden to a partisan platform or public pressure than to the law. Judges have political beliefs and ideological persuasions, everyone does. But public officials must not treat the judiciary as if it were just another political branch. Doing so undermines public respect for state courts, which provide most Americans with their only experiences in the judiciary, and debase their hard-won independence for nothing but partisan gain. Since I was appointed last year, we've done quite a few big-ticket items this year, which is mainly the security items, and we have more on the way. And first project that was completed was the cameras inside and out of the court, tying it into the police department, so if there's any problems going on in the court, they can immediately see whether or not they need, you know, a couple officers just to separate people, or if someone needs a gun, or whether or not we need a SWAT team. So they'll be able to see, see those kind of things. If anybody does anywhere damage to the outside of the court, like happened on one occasion a couple of years ago, it'll be able to see who did, who did that kind of damage. We're having security badge access cards going in this month, that should be finished by the end of the month, hopefully. Or instead of, a lot of staff members have, have tendencies to leave doors unlocked, which makes us unsecured. Now they'll have the badges that they can go with, and then it won't be an excuse for not locking doors. So, that'll make it safer for everybody. There's going to be some new security film put in in certain areas to prevent things from happening. And that program, too, we asked for grant funding, even though we're already committed to the money on it, we still ask for grant, grant funding, to where if we do get the grant money, we'll be able to use that instead of corporate handsome money for that. The other big project that we're going to be starting sometime in the near future, once it gets bids, will be to secure the outside of the building from accidental or intentional drive-throughs. And, you know, we decided just to put that on the, the agenda. Right before that, there had been several drive-throughs of, of, into McDonald's and Walmarts and that type of thing down in Maricopa County. And some of them were intentional, with three people just wanting to ram through the stores. We've had that happen, we went down to Circle K, three, four years ago, if I remember the time period right. And right now, our court on the front, theoretically, someone should just drive and hit the curb, and it's like they had a truck that could just drive into the front of the building. So we're going to put big boulders there, and then the places where big boulders aren't appropriate, we're going to put some of those, how should I forget what they're called, bollards? In appropriate places, that way nobody can drive through the front lobby area, the side of the lobby area, or anywhere in the front staff area. And the other areas in the court are all protected, because it's all walls, so. And we again asked for grant money on that, too. The other thing we asked for grant money on was for X-ray machines and for the wands. Our size court, with the number of, of days a week that we have, court appearances, we're only technically required to have a wand, but we've asked for the X-ray just in case we can find some volunteers to, to, to help us with that in the, in the future. We've had occasions where the police partners generous enough to help do searches before a couple of order protection hearings. One in particular, every single person in the room had a knife on them. So they had to, they had to turn their knives over, they had to put them in the lockers that we have in the front of the building, just as if they come in with a gun, they can put it in the locker, a knife they can put in the locker. So, we're way ahead of what the Supreme Court wants us to do on security, and we're doing even more than is required in the area of security. The other big program that we've done since, since I was reappointed last year was the Compliance Assistance Program. We've had quite a few people come in on that to get their licenses unsuspended and bring the city cash. If you look at our numbers for revenues the past few months, you'll see that numbers are going up this year as far as revenues coming in. And the other thing to point out is, for the first three months of this fiscal year, the number of cases filed are doubled. They're exactly, they're just a little over double what they were for the same fiscal year of last year. So I think that needs to be taken into account when other possible future decisions are made. And with that, if anybody else has any other questions, I'd be glad to do it. The other thing I point out, too, is, as I put on my monthly reports, I always put on there, if anybody has any questions, they can call me anytime, contact me anytime, and I'm always welcome to meet with council members. Ms. Alt House, did you have a question?
I, I have one question.
Sure, please.
Actually, I have one question and one statement. I've asked you, I asked you this before, I don't remember what the topic was that you were up speaking about, but on a daily basis or a weekly basis, how many cases do you hear, not the court, but you?
Well, of the three hundred cases a month, what goes into the courtroom? See, it's, it's hard to say, because some of them I have to, depends on what issue comes up on a particular case. There's no like exact number or exact percentage that it is. But the cases that go into court, and that I see in hearings, it's probably about a hundred. And then the ones that come to the window and that type of thing, they bring motions to extend time for payment, to. for payment, to, to get some additional time to do things, sometimes they have to see my contempt issues, have orders for protection to come in, all of those can be another forty, fifty to a hundred, depending on how busy the month is. In addition, I have all the administrative duties too, which involves a lot of email work and work with the AOC as, as well, and working with the court administrator.
My question is specific to the number of cases that you hear in the courtroom, not how many cases come into the court, but how many cases do you hear versus some of the other, what are they, associate judges?
You know, the, the ones that come for pre-trials and arrangements is probably, I don't have an exact number, probably, they can be sixty to a hundred cases, and then civil traffic hearings, those are a few per week, orders of protection, there can be up to ten, ten or so per week, and then orders to show cause, that depends on how many people were summoned into court and how many people decided to show up. Sometimes only two or three show up, sometimes ten or twelve or, or more, more show up. So the numbers can be higher at, at times, it just depends on how many people are coming in. Now that we have more cases coming in, in general, their cases are going to require work into the future, so that's going to take more time in court because each of those extra hundred and fifty cases from what it was last year, are all going to have, if they don't get their case taken care of to start with, they'll have their pre-trial conferences that you have to go to the next time, they'll, sometimes some of them will have trials, a lot of the civil traffics that are coming in and higher numbers, they'll all have civil traffic trials as well. So those numbers I just gave you will be increasing over the next few months due to the increase in cases. So that number is probably a conservative number for now, but it's going to be higher over the next few months, and if it continues at that rate and goes higher, it'll be even higher than that.
So maybe what you could do for me is get me like last, last month's, just last month's numbers, you don't have to do it today, it's something you can email, email me, I don't know if everybody else is interested in that, but just if you could get me last month's numbers, how many cases came into the court total, and how many cases did you hear?
I can give you how many came into the court right now.
I want, I want the whole picture, please. And I know you can't do that tonight, but if you could email that, and it sounds like everybody would, would like, or at least most of us would send it to all of us.
I understand part of that's an impossibility, but I'll go back and look at two hundreds.
I'm just asking for last month's statistics.
What I'm saying is a lot of the ones that come to the window, I do an action on it, they put the file away somewhere, so it's not something I can just get numbers on who I saw on all of those people.
Well, she's talking about the courtroom though, that's the window.
Understand.
In the courtroom.
No, orders to show cause come into the courtroom, Ms. Allen, they come into the courtroom. Civil traffic trials are done in the courtroom, a lot of the motions are done in the courtroom.
I'm sorry, you just used the example of the window, that's why I was saying that, you said they came to the window.
Some of them.
I said that's what they're, not what they're looking for.
Some of the civil traffic cases are done at the window, and I don't see them. Some of the civil traffic cases are done in the courtroom, and I do see them, and I mentioned civil traffic trials I do in the courtroom, and some of them on motions and that type of thing I do in the courtroom as well. Orders to show cause are all done inside the courtroom, they're not done at the window, and...
I guess I, what I, what I'm most interested in is what is done inside the courtroom versus how many cases just come in, and then how many go to the courtroom, and you are the judge in the courtroom, not somebody else.
I understand that, but I, I just want you to know that there's not any way to get an exact number because we don't, there's no, there's been no reason to track those as we go along on ones that end up going into the courtroom, that I go into the courtroom to deal with on some of them.
Everything's not put into a computer system?
It, it, it's scheduled for the pre-trials and the arrangements, and we can determine those, but when someone comes in off schedule, and they're welcome to come in five days a week, they come to the front window, they, they file a written motion, they, they file it with the clerk, the clerk brings it to me, sometimes I'll handle it at the window, sometimes I'll handle it inside the courtroom, depending on what the nature of the, of what they're talking about is. If they're coming in, they're late on a case and they have a warrant, but they also had an order to show cause as to why they should not be found in contempt for not doing things they were supposed to, then we'll take it into the court. So that's not going to be on a schedule anywhere that you can go back and look at, that's just going to be something that got, brought to the front window, and we took it in, into the court. And then each individual case has their docketting in for the AOC, and that's how AOC's set it up. They haven't set it up where we can really tell how many went into the courtroom or not into the courtroom, so, but I can give you some estimates, and I can work with my court administrator to see what her estimates are.
I think just, yeah, your best, best stab at it would be great.
I understand, I, I can't guarantee a hundred percent accuracy because...
That's fine, I'm not going to go audit the, the court dockets, I just want an idea. And then my second thing is, on page eight of your self-review, item five, and you were talking about the council and employee relations, you talk about how you weren't made aware of something until the Friday before, the agenda item, which was when we had Judge Lundie come in. I just want you to be aware that council is not, besides the mayor, council is not aware of agenda items as well. We now get a draft packet, thanks to Matt, on Thursdays, but that's just recently happened. We also don't know what's on the agenda until the Friday before, because staff is, is preparing it, so it's more of a statement, I don't want, I, it bothered me that this was written because I didn't know either that this, that that agenda item was on the agenda until, I think, the Friday before, because I don't think we were getting the packets on, on Thursday. So it's not that we're not communicating with you, it's that, that stuff is not being finalized until Friday.
And the complaint wasn't directed to you, and it wasn't a complaint?
No, I know it wasn't.
It wasn't a complaint, it wasn't directed at council members. I was trying to request of the mayor that if there's any way that I can get some advance notice, that would be helpful. Because especially the thing with, with Lundie coming in with his campaign sign, I didn't know that that was going to be a campaign night, and I, and I didn't know until just days before that it was supposed to be done, and I wasn't even supposed to be in town that day, I had to change airline fares to be there. And, and that's something that was brought out of the blue from the past, past year, a year ago. I had no way of knowing that was coming up to, to, to try to say, oh, hey, don't, please don't set it on that. I did tell council and staff that I was going to receive that Hall of Fame award that week, so at some point in time, I advised you guys that I wasn't going to be here for that, but it wasn't directed to you because you don't set the schedule. It was a polite, it was, it was meant as a polite request of the mayor to try to ask that he do that. If it came across as anything other than a polite request, I apologize, but that's what the intent of it was.
I didn't think it was directed at me, I just wanted to make you aware that we also do not.
I understand, but if you're on the other side of things, working for the city, and you don't know to come to every single meeting, and it's one, it's being set, that particularly is involving you, I would trust that you would probably want to make sure it's a date that you, you're available to do, and you're not already have your tickets for being out of town on that particular day. I hope, I hope that's fair.
Any other questions, comments?
I, I'll make a comment on the salary thing too, I mean, I, you know, you have an assigned range, which is a, a range of thirty-two, and that range within the city has a minimum and maximum salary. I don't know what was your, you know, what was said in the executive session or with you, you know, before, but to me, my opinion is you have a range, you're at, at an assigned range, and there is a, a range within that, so a city employee who's a range thirty-two cannot go above the one fourteen, three ninety-nine, sixty-seven. And to me, that stands for contracted employees as well. And like I said, I didn't, I, I didn't see anything in your contract that said this, you know, range is flexible or, or anything like that, so this is my opinion, other people may have a different opinion, but that's my opinion.
I understand, but I was really willing and able, and we were, I brought things up to Mr. Horton in advance, to, to try to discuss that. At the, at the session, they indicated that, no, that's for city employees, we treat contract employees different, and we can do whatever we want with contract employees, it can go over these, these ranges, it doesn't have to be, so instead of engaging in conversation about what the appropriateness of the range was, it was all set, and it was an open session, by the way, with Mayor Jones saying it, and other council members agreeing to it, that that was not going to be a held to, you're going to be held to that range, it'll be, council has the power to, to do what they think is appropriate on salary increases or not in, in the future, even if it takes you above that range, and in fact, that's what happened, because the last time it was done, it went above the range. That's an exhibit of how, that's what was agreed to before, because that's what they did the last time my salary was increased, so.
Well, it's a new council, and I guess this council will have to, to decide how they want to treat the ranges. I've stated my opinion on, on salary ranges, so.
I understand.
New council.
I understand.
That's all I have.
Do you want to discuss any of your goals for your tenure with the city? Next year's goals?
I've already indicated, the first one that you mentioned about securing the outside of the court, the fact that grant applications were, were pending, I've discussed a, a desire to improve internal security, including the security film and the handheld wands and the x-ray machines. We've all completed training regarding the access Ajax program, and having staff become very proficient with this use, that's still an ongoing process, and they're doing a good job of, of, of learning things now. And then Ms. Riordan, number four, is completing her Arizona Court Manager training, she just completed three days last week, she has, I think, two more sessions left this year, and then she has a day and a half capstone, and then she'll be completed with her Arizona Court Manager training, which is essential for, for court administrators to, to complete. Working on a warrant reduction program, I've been checking with a lot of, of different courts to see what ways we might be able to have to reduce the number of warrants. In the past, we've worked with Mr. Jordal, prosecutor, to try to, try to put cases in front of him that, that were appropriate for consideration on whether or not he wanted to dismiss cases because they're too old, that type of thing, and it was his decision, and in some cases he would, some cases he wouldn't, but because they were getting old, and they, we hadn't seen people in eight, ten, twenty years, he, he made, he made decisions along that period of time. So those are our major goals for, for next year.
Okay. Did notice too that under your suggested improvements and employee, council employee relations, that you're requesting more transparency from the mayor, and between the mayor and council, so I will do my job in making you more aware of when I have discussions with other outside agencies about the possibilities of co-location, because I will be having those discussions this, you know, for the, in the coming months, so I'll, I'll make you more aware of that and work with you more to get information to provide to council, and let council know too when I'm having those meetings, so that we're just all aware, so there's no question.
Because one, one thing that came up, and I'm not attacking you, is, is after this, after you brought it up recently about consolidation slash co-location. A natural instinct of ours, which is, was to check with Clarkdale, see if they're interested or if we could show them around and let them know what our court was like and that type of thing, and they said that they had several meetings over the previous year with you, Mr. Bartosz, and other council members, and that, and I said, and, and her statement was, the city of cottonwood expressed no interest in doing anything regarding consolidation into our court, whereas apparently the court administrator and, and their, and their judges retiring had a lot of interest in moving into our court, but, because they felt that there was no interest from the council. Now, if we'd have known about that a while before, we could have let people know that there's ways that our court is, is appropriate for them. Now, they also have, just so you know, they have a one-year contract with a lot of out clauses, so if they're not, if they're not happy with the way things are going, then we're still a natural, natural option for them as well. And as I put in my document here, I don't need the extra salary from them, you can take the eighteen that they're going to give to Judge Lundie to increase his retirement fund, to go ahead and pay it to the council, and I'll do their cases, no extra money, and you guys can have the eighteen thousand reduction, reducing what my salary would be. But they, they, they have to make a decision in a year, and it can get out in less than a year, and they're already having some issues, I'm told, about whether or not they can come into our court, and I'd be happy to show everyone here how the layout of our court is, and where, we've already talked to their court administrator about where they're, where they could go and how we could serve them, and would pay, pay the city that extra eighteen thousand dollars, instead of giving it to Lundie, give it to the city to reduce my salary, and you'd be getting your, your building lease money and proportionate costs of electric utilities and all that kind of stuff too, which would cut the, the expense of running our court down quite a bit. But that was never able to be discussed before because there was no transparency, and we didn't know that that was something that maybe we needed to bring to people's attention that Clarkdale could have been interested if they would have been talked to about it. So that's, that's kind of what I was going to, and like I said, it's not a criticism of you, but it's something that, that could be, come into play in the future too, especially since we haven't done anything with consolidation or co-location just yet. And that's why I put in some other suggestions in here too about things that could be done to make sure you're making a correct decision before you do it. Because as I put on the, that one section, I mean, it, it took me a ten-minute Google search to find the problems with the court building that the, the county recognizes. I mean, that was just last year, Judge Lundie was there, all the, all the boards of supervisors were there, and you've got one board of supervisors commiserating with him that their building is falling apart and that it's not designed for a courtroom. That doesn't sound like something we should be trying to move into if it's a building that's falling apart. We left and put a new court building in because the back half of this building was falling apart and all had mold and be, floors caving in and walls pushing in and that type of thing. We just left because the building was falling apart. We should not be moving into another building on a co-location into another building that's, as the board of supervisors said, is falling apart. And I was also told by Judge Lundie that he had a big foundation crack by his, his office, I don't know if that's been fixed or not yet, but, you know, that's still within the past year, that that's what the board of supervisors is saying about their court. You know, since I didn't have much time, and so I was asking for more time, because you know you've been dealing with this issue for a year, you could have given me a heads-up two months ago to say, hey, if you want to look at, at other information to let us have more information in making our decision process, I could, I could have done that at the time, and then you would have had a lot more information and options at the time, but, but you didn't talk to me. And I tried to talk to you, as you remember, that one time I talked to you after, I sent a letter to everybody saying, you know, please let's, you know, I'd like to meet with you and talk to you and see if you have any, you have any questions. And I specifically asked you if anything like that was in work, and you said, no, I haven't even thought about it, there's, you know, I haven't made any decisions. Remember I asked you things about part-time and that type of thing, when we had lunch right across the street? And I said, no, I haven't given much, and that was a month before I got reappointed, and you said, no, I haven't given it much thought, but it's something that was, been going on for a year apparently, so. All I'm asking, and like I said, I'm not attacking you or criticizing you, I'm just asking that in the future, on things that affect the court, it would only be fair that we have some advanced, advanced contacts, so we can have a chance to provide adequate information to the council members, so they can make appropriate decisions on things that they're going to be making decisions on.
Thank you, Judge, I'll keep you informed of the meetings that I have.
Thank you.
Now, one thing that you need to realize too is you've got seven people here with different opinions on different things in the city, and if we're out there doing some fact-finding to maybe enhance what we want to bring forward to the city, we can't discuss it with each other anyway. So if, if you're getting feedback that someone's checking with someone about something, it doesn't mean that all of us are, it doesn't mean that we even know what the others are checking because we, we're not, we can't talk about it. So if someone's checking with Clarkdale or Camp Verdi or something like that, it doesn't mean the rest of us know, it just means that they need more information to move forward. So it, it's not a conspiracy or anything, it's just that, that we, we do, I asked Planning and Zoning this, this morning about something, and I'd like to get a, a mirror put at Villa or Via coming from eighty-nine A to Cove Parkway, because it's a blind corner, that just doesn't mean that now everybody knows, but we're in a meeting. But it just doesn't mean that, because we're making inquiries, we're trying to get more information to, to make the city better, so that's, that's where I'm coming from.
And I understand, and I have, and I have great respect for all the work all of you do. The one, one thing I, I think you do need to know though is Mayor Linsky, Councilmember Henry, Amanda and myself were all at the open meeting law discussion, and what, what came out of it was, you can have discussions with more than one other council members, you just can't have a quorum present when you're discussing.
I know that, I've been on it twenty-four plus years, so I, I'm aware of that.
No, I understand. Okay, I misunderstood something you said then.
I think, Karen, you make, you make an excellent point, we do make inquiries, you know, I had a meeting today that nobody knows, Doug knows about it, but, you know, with a, two city employees and a, and a resident, so these things do happen, and we don't necessarily tell each other because we're taking care of, of stuff for our constituents or...
Things that come to us.
Or things that come up, or, or things that we see, and I, I think it's an excellent point.
It's our job, and it, it...
Right.
You know, but, you know, my job too is to gather information for this council here so we can all make an informed decision, so the meetings that I've had with, with Clarkdale and with the county are, are to do just that, is to gather enough information and, you to gather enough information, and, you know, request information from you as well, so that this council can make an informed decision. So there certainly isn't any conspiracy going on, and you are a professional, as well as I am, if you don't mind, as well as I'm a professional. So in my professional line of work, what I do for a living, of course, I'm a builder, I wouldn't reprimand my client for going out and getting an alternate estimate, it's certainly something that I encourage with my clients. Doesn't mean there's a conspiracy going on, it means that they're doing their due diligence, which I would encourage, so I would assume you, too, would encourage that same behavior amongst the people who employ you.
I understand that, and like I said, it wasn't meant as an attack. I'm answering the questions in the format you have about what can the council do that would make us feel better about the relationship with the council, and I answered the question. You may not like my answer to the question, but it's entered to me in good faith, trying to help get us some more information, so that we can provide more information that would be of use to council members as well. So I was trying to answer the question, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, council?
I do have one comment.
Sure.
We have a comment where we're allowed to give suggested improvements, and my suggested improvement has to do with resolving personnel issues and not ever mentioning them at that podium when you're discussing it with us, unless that's the topic to be discussed, or you've been directed by HR, and my suggestion would be to attend an HR training, work that out with Amanda, so you understand what you can and can't say at that podium, because things have been said there that were terribly inappropriate, and that's my only desire for improvement for you, is to understand the HR laws, and where you, the city's going to get into trouble, and where we can actually be liable for some things that are said at that podium that shouldn't have been said. That's my, that's my only need for improvement in you.
Are we done with our worksheets? Would we like to pass them down to Matt, then?
I didn't fill mine out, because I thought we were going to verbally do it in the room.
Okay. So then we have, thank you. Again, this is his midterm evaluation, I think, it sounds like we've given good feedback, and he'll certainly get more feedback from the forums there. Is there any other discussion? There's no action to be taken today?
I.e. salary. I'm not, I'm not real hot on increasing the salary, and I know the judge has indicated that this is just a suggestion and not a rule. However, the minute I came in here, when that range is set there, it is a rule, and it's a rule for me for all the contract employees, unless it's been changed in their contract. It's been specifically changed in their contract to say, you know, this was, we did this four years ago, this might be flexible now. If it's not said, this is the rule, and we've gone over it, and my point of view is that's a cap, we should never go over the cap, and we have several employees that are over the cap. And I think we need to consider that and take that under advisement, that we need a cap, our employees are not allowed to go over the cap, and they work their tails off. They reach their cap, and that's where they are, and I think the same should be for our contract employees.
I agree.
Any other thoughts?
So what action are we looking for? He's already employed for the next year, but we're not considering any kind of a salary adjustment? Is that right?
I don't, he hasn't made a formal request, I don't, I don't think, certainly it's up for consideration, but I don't, I don't sense that this council's considering that at this point.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, so then the salary would remain the same, the contract remains in effect, and there's no change to it?
Okay.
So there's, then no motion to be made?
There's no action to take?
The results, can you hand it out now?
They...
Just got to do the math.
Yeah, he can do the math, it'll be in your file, for sure, so I don't know if we can wait for him to do the math, and we could share the results, or...
He can give you a copy.
Or just submit a copy to you tomorrow?
Either way.
Everybody's staring at you, Matt.
I know.
Good at that.
No, I'm not even halfway done.
Yeah. What's your, what's your pleasure, pleasure, Judge? Would you, would you like him to give that to you tomorrow, the results? Okay. Okay, very good.
Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, Councilmember Henry made the motion, and Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we're adjourned, thank you.